Welcome to the Iowa City City Council Work Session on June 30th. And this is a one-item agenda essentially related to Black Lives Matter. And so wanted to, again, just talk to the community as to where we are as council and where we are as a community. We know that the death of George Floyd has really caused within our country a lot of heartache and grief. And but it has also allowed an opportunity for people within our own city to look at what are we doing? And how can we change the movement within Black Lives Matter? And look at some systemic racism and how we move forward. We created a resolution. And tonight, we're going to talk about that resolution go through. The plan is not to get into the details, at least from what I have knowledge on. That council would like to do, or at least my personal intent. The intent of this meeting is really to allow us to start to talk a little bit about the framework of how we are going to move forward with Black Lives Matter with the 17 items that we have committed to. So with that being said, we know that, at least the councillors have all received from councillor Burgess and Weiner, some thoughts from their point of view of how we can move forward. In a minute, we'll probably look at, we'll look at that or talk about it in some fashion. And I am not exactly sure if all the councillors have received the letter from IFR in your emails. Can, and if you haven't seen the letters in your emails, then at some point, I will have it shared on the screen so that we can talk about it. So I think for starting our conversation, the plan is to go through each item. And I think the hope is that we kind of tackle this from the expectation of setting up how we envision groups. I know that many of us have been in lots of conversations with people in the community, including IFR, on some of the things that people are wanting now that we have our resolutions in order to move forward. So my thought is that we would kind of go through the items. Maybe for starters, we can talk about some of the groups that have been emailed to us through the councillors as well as definitely look at at least what the categories that IFR sent. And I'll tell you that it was policing, housing, truth and reconciliation, diversity, equity and inclusion. And then the councillors Burgess and Weiner sent categories that stated public safety, healing. And then they had some items under there. So I'm going to just stop there and let councillors maybe give any comments that they want before we kind of dive in or give some thoughts on which direction we should go.
I'll go ahead and start. I really appreciate the efforts of councillors Burgess and Weiner to put together that memo and kind of give us some direction for tonight. I think that was really helpful. And when I looked through their two categories and kind of some of the items they put under each one, and then I looked at the memo from IFR, to me, there was an awful lot of similarity between those two. So from my perspective, what I would be really comfortable with is it's kind of a combination of the two, really. I think when I kind of did my lists of the 17 points in which categories they would fit in for each, for the memo from councillor Burgess and also for IFR, and they really matched up well. But what IFR does that I think is actually helpful is it kind of pulls out two pieces. It pulls out housing, which is part of item number two in the resolution, but that's a huge item. So to me, pulling that out could make a lot of sense. And then the Truth and Reconciliation Commission also is a really huge item to work on. So from my perspective, if we basically used what IFR has presented, I do like, however, the public safety title that councillors Burgess and Weiner have used, because I think that's a little broader scope than just police. So if we went with public safety, housing, the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, and then I don't care whether you call it healing or whether you call it diversity, equity and inclusion, but I think those four categories could work really well.
This is Pauline. I agree, and I thank councillor Burgess and Weiner for sharing their thoughts on that. But I too thought perhaps police didn't sound quite as great as what we'd like it to mean. But I did like the categories that the IFR sent, also with the housing, pulling that out, and the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Because in thinking about plans forward, I think that should be top of our list. And perhaps we should talk about that tonight as a priority. Everything kind of seems to spin around that. And I think that we didn't really talk about, we touched on that we would consider it like we do our other commission appointments. But I think that we need to make a definite on that, make definite plans to post that as a commission and get applicants for that and get that started, because that seems to be square one where we need to start. But I'd also thought, and maybe it sort of goes along with the IFR's category, which I liked, is diversity, equity. And you know, that's kind of is the healing. But I also thought of well-being. I think it's more the well-being of our entire community, such things as like the using the public arts for the mural. That that kind of makes people feel feel good and understand where they're coming from on this. And I think the city of Dubuque recently hired an artist, one of their local artists, to do a beautiful mural on one of their buildings. And I think that is something that we seriously need to look at. And that brings up some of the already boards and commissions that we have, such as the public art. They need to be a part of this. Our HCDC committee, our Human Rights Commission, those all really need to be a part of these things too, these items. So we need to include them and figure out how to include them. And that should be a place to start too.
One of my comments and following up on what we've already mentioned, I too am appreciative of the work of IFR and also Janice and Laura of trying to come up with categories for framing how we move forward. One thought I was having in this regard would be the question of what I would term opportunity. You know, when I look at the issue before us, which is trying to address, you know, what we're describing in the resolution as systemic racism, it seems to me that there are a lot of aspects of our city operation, our commissions, our boards that I would like to try to incorporate into this process, staff as well. And under that kind of framework or concept of opportunity, which I think addresses issues of economic development, workforce development, recreation, transportation, a whole range of issues, which I feel if we're really, really going to be looking at this, then this thing systematically, we should in the end have recommendations that would address, you know, all these various aspects which make up the life of Iowa City. You know, I've looked at some of the reports from years past. You know, we're not the first to have tried to address systemic racism. This has been around, it's been with us for hundreds of years. The most recent one that I discovered was the Kerner Commission report from about 52 years ago. And they certainly talk about police reform, but they also talk about, you know, the kinds of issues that I was describing as being critical to truly achieving a society where opportunity and systemic racism have been eradicated. So, you know, I kind of viewed this resolution, and it's kind of in the heading of the resolution as initial council commitments. And I think the focus initially was on the police reform, which I think is a critical one. Housing kind of made its way in there. But I do see that there are as other issues as important as housing if we are truly going to be successful at achieving our goals.
All right, so I did hear two more possible categories. Councillor Thomas just mentioned opportunity. And then councillor Taylor mentioned well-being. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that. One thing that I still hope that we'll do is kind of maybe figure out categories first. And then maybe we can start throwing some of the numbers from the resolution under the categories. And then we can come back to a little further discussion as to the process for individuals being at the table.
My suggestion would be, and I sort of, I like the way that a couple of you fleshed it out further by taking the IFR categories and pulling out truth and reconciliation on the one hand and housing on the other. I would suggest that maybe if it's possible to have a visual that staff, much like Ashley's done in the past, could take some notes and show us on the screen so that we can see how we're categorizing things. And at the same time, I also suggest that, as you were just mentioning, Mayor, that we really focus initially on the 17 items of this resolution. This is what we've committed to initially. It is a start, as you mentioned, John. But I think that we need to really use this document initially as our touchstone or our constitution and come back and make sure that we have it fleshed out. And then maybe some of the rest of this will come in holistically. But I think we need to focus initially on this document.
I agree 100% Janice. I understand that there is many issues that for, as Jan said, for the life of Iowa City resident. Completely agree with you. But right now, it's the focus of Black Lives Matter, is the focus of, you know, the IFR demand, is the focus of the resolution that we agree to do it. So I think we can talk about anything. I don't mind talking about anything else in the city. And that's our, you know, that's our work. We have to do everything. We have to like look at all the demand that the city wants and they need. But right now, we have to focus. I like with, you know, Janice and Laura Burgess, you know, both of them, this is really great to start with. But to be honest with you, I love that, you know, that as Susan Mim said, the housing and pulling out some specific information that both of them will work together very good if we can do that. I don't know what, what councillor interior meant by healing, not healing, I guess, well-being or what she said. I don't know. I don't remember that exact word. But I need like more clarification about what that means, why we can put this in, you know? And speaking about the public safety instead of police, I really want it to be police. Because we need to focus, you know, the Black Lives Matter is not complaining about the firefighter. They are not complaining about anything else, but they are specifically talking about restructuring the police department. So why we want to add to it, let us just make it focus on the police department. And that's why, you know, I really like what they're proposed. I understand that public safety will include a lot of things, no problem. We're going to work with that too. We want also to do, to work for the firefighter and everything. But I really specifically know that Black Lives Matter, their problem is with the police department. We need to call it what it is. That's what I think.
So we do have police as a category, which we already had that, of course. And I think opportunity, at least from when I heard opportunity from councillor Thomas, and maybe you can clarify, one of the biggest things that I know when we're talking about black lives throughout our nation, when we're looking at businesses and businesses for people of color, at least in our Iowa City area, we have very few businesses. And so when I heard the word opportunity, I saw that as kind of focusing in on things specific to people of color or minorities within our community. Is that some of the things what you were thinking about, at least when I heard the word opportunity?
Yeah, it was certainly an important, an important component moving forward is the question of economic opportunity. You know, it's to me, one of the foundations that need to be addressed, as well as housing. You know, the notion of, you know, opportunity applies to that as well. Housing opportunity, the opportunity to live in an inclusive neighborhood is an important goal. Education, obviously, opportunity as it relates to education, which I would expand to include education outside the classroom. In other words, just general competency and mentorship issues. But yeah, opportunity seems to me to be a word that's often, often part of these sorts of discussions historically. And it's in this land of opportunities, as the United States has often been called, where we find African Americans and people of color just have not had the opportunities that have been offered to others.
I do wonder if, as you were talking, if that could not go under truth and reconciliation potentially? Because that would be something that they could navigate as well.
Bruce, that could be another, you know, category if we set opportunity for people of color. And like getting, like having businesses, given that we just have businesses, houses, all those, you know? But but if it's opportunity in general, I really, really want you guys to focus on what the demand that we have. You know, if the opportunity, if we're going to create opportunity category, it has to be opportunity within the 17, you know, point that we have.
I agree, Mayor Potem. I think one thing that was talked about, and John mentioned workforce development, which we've talked about on council for years. Rock Nicole talked about that as far as getting the schools to have children learn the trades, working together with Kirkwood Community College. But along with that, we also talked about what are the barriers that we haven't mentioned? That one of the categories was increasing our workforce, people of color in our workforce. That would fall under opportunity. But under that, one of the actions is to find what are the barriers? Is it, are there barriers? Why are they not applying? You know, what can we do to get them, you know, to come into our workforce? So yeah, I think I agree, opportunity is a good category for that.
It might just be a matter of semantics. But would you agree, John, that opportunity would fall within the diversity, equity and inclusion? I mean, I think of especially equity, that's, you know, having an opportunity that is equitable in all of those different subject matter areas. I'm just wondering if we can use that, that heading of diversity, equity and inclusion and know that what we're talking about includes opportunity in all those different areas. Do you think that would work?
I think if we're looking at one word, opportunity, implicit in the notion of opportunity are our questions of diversity, equity and inclusion. So yeah, I mean, if the majority on the council like diversity, equity and inclusion, there are similarities there, you know? So yeah, if that's what people prefer. But again, I was trying to look for a word that has some, you know, this, I just seen it repeatedly used in documents in the past, the question of opportunity and how that has, that's when there are barriers to opportunity that are felt in our community. And it sort of relates more specifically, as Bruce mentioned, to the mayor mentioned, to question of business, you know, business opportunities, things of that sort.
As we try and, go ahead, Pauline. I was just going to mention, since you were talking about that inclusive title, what I was referring to, the well-being, perhaps maybe would fall under that as far as folks or people feeling more included in the community would benefit their well-being. They would feel more like they are part of the community and valued as community members. So that could actually maybe fall under the inclusive title. Because I did like that category that the IFR included.
So I'm not sure if councillor Burgess was going to say something, but I did want to kind of refer to what I'm hearing from council, not majority totally. But I kind of hear really going with the public safety and policing, maybe hear a little more about that. But it sounds like housing, diversity, equity and inclusion, because well-being, I can see, I think that's perfectly an option under there. Opportunity could be one of the, one of the charges under there as well. Truth and resolution, a truth and reconciliation commission. We know that that is something that we definitely want and having that as a category of its own. So then it is, I kind of hear either public safety and police.
I mean, I think that one of the reasons that we are referring to public safety is we're looking forward, we're looking for a framework ultimately, as we decide what we want this to look like, that will serve the entire community and serve it well. And that's not just policing. It's a core competency of a city. And that, at least that encapsulates the reason why I really like the term public safety, because it is more all encompassing and it can focus on nonviolence. It can focus on community policing. It can focus on a variety of things that I think are likely to be on our agenda.
I understand, you know, Janice, what you're saying. But when you say serving the whole community, of course, that's a goal. But if we just focus on the demand, let us read the demand number one. It is just in obstruction of the police department. And I understand that, you know, we need to do the whole public safety for the whole community, including police and fire department and everything. But for the, yes, the seek of the focus of the resolution, we need to focus right now. And we need to have committed that structure of the police. We're just going to deal with the policing for now. That's why, just give it the name that it should be given, the right name, you know? That's what I really believe. But I'm with you, we need to like work on the whole public safety, you know, for the whole community. Definitely, that's something we need to do. But right now, we are just talking about Black Lives Matter. We are talking about the restriction of the police. That's why, when we give it only the police, that means we're going to put all our effort toward implementing that demand, number one.
So as I, go right ahead.
Sorry, Mayor. Just to clarify, because I think it's, I think it's important to focus on, you know, the resolution, like you said, Mayor Potem. And one of the reasons I was using the term public safety rather than policing is that I think our commitment to restructure the police means alternatives to policing as well. And so I wanted to be like, in the words of, you know, the resolution that we adopted, it's decreasing the public's reliance on police in nonviolent situations and through the use of unarmed professionals. And so if that's not, you know, if our intent is to make sure that we're evaluating and potentially adopting some of those alternatives to traditional policing, that, I mean, I wanted to elevate that goal as, you know, set forth in, I think, both thyra Freedom Riders demand as well as our, you know, the words of our resolution, which is why I didn't want to limit it to policing, because I think we could get stuck in just what is the current system. So that was where I was coming from with the use of that term.
I agree with, oh, sorry, Mayor. I was just going to say, I agree with councillor Burgess on that, because although police is the generic category we're talking about, that tends to, you tend to think of law enforcement. And I think we're looking at the options and you don't see that, such as, you know, increasing perhaps social workers out there to take calls from the call center kind of thing. And that would be a different meaning than police as such.
I do wonder if we don't kind of move forward with going through the items we, and I don't know if I can ask Ashley on the spot if she would be willing to kind of take some notes and throw them up on the computer screen if she is available.
Awesome. I do have a document here. I hope this suffices.
Great.
It's just a listing of the resolution items. And based on your conversation about category, we can add that in some notes, so.
Great. I wonder if we can't number the public safety and police? Because I was going to just say, we will wrap back around and kind of figure out if we go public safety or police. And then as far as the healing, at least from what I've heard so far, it kind of sounds like we're just going with diversity, equity and inclusion, especially given what councillors have been talking about with opportunity as well as well-being. So I think that this is kind of where we are, with those four. So we'll go with.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mayor, that looks good to me. And I certainly, you know, appreciate the viewpoint and rationale that councillors Weiner and Burgess have used in terms of public safety. And I agree with that in terms of looking forward. But Mayor Potem, Sully's point of the focus here and some of the issues that have brought us to this point are policing issues. So actually, to do this as a public safety slash police, or I think policing might be better, helps give that focus to all groups in terms of what we're looking at. I think the diversity, equity and inclusion to the broader community might be clearer than what healing says. And then I'm really comfortable with three and four as they're written. So that's just my perspective.
All right, should we get started? So maybe we'll just start saying what, where number one, kind of go under which one of those numbers, one through four of the resolution.
Number one.
Number one, we're, I think, all right. So we might be able to cruise through this a little bit. So number two, that's truth and reconciliation. Or do we see that it can be kind of?
Number two.
Well, I think it's cross cutting to include diversity, equity, inclusion, housing, truth and reconciliation, and perhaps even public safety, because I think we're going to have to divide the money up once we meet on that among all four categories to some extent.
I would agree. It's at least two, three and four, and potentially number one as well.
All right. Any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, two, three, four, more than number one, but yeah.
Agreed.
All right. So then what we can probably do is come back around and talk about that a little more. So number three.
Number two, diversity, plenty.
Agreed, yes.
So those in the public, we are actually going through all of the 17 items of the resolution, which we did on June 16th. which we did on June sixteenth, and so we're kind of putting them in categories, just so that you're aware. All right.
Number one.
So we're at number four, any other thoughts for number three, or we're pretty good there? All right, so number four.
One.
One, definitely.
Agreed.
Okay. Number five.
Four, three, five, four.
Yeah.
And then number six. That's. I, I almost, I mean, I would say number.
What, I don't know.
Maybe all of them?
Almost all of them, it is almost all of them.
Yeah, I think because it has the CPRB, you can, you know, say number one. I think I'm comfortable with number one.
Number one.
Yeah. But I can see it in other categories as well.
Yeah, I think you're right, I think the key issues of of the IFR fell under that as far as policing and 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 things that relate to that, so for legislative issues, we, we have a lot of legislative issues, but in relating to the IFR requests, yeah, number one, yeah.
Okay, number seven.
Last one. Inclusion, diversity. I don't remember the number anymore.
Yes, so number, number two.
That's number two.
Yes. Yep.
When we get all done, we might want to change those to A, B, C and D.
Great, number.
Doing it on the fly.
Yes, number eight.
Number one. I'm number nine, sorry.
But I agree with number eight being number one, the CPRB.
Now A, it's now A.
Okay, we're, all right, perfect. Great. All right. Well, we'll give a minute.
Number one.
So, all right, we'll go to number nine, unless Ashley needs a minute.
Oh, okay.
Just getting adjusted for us.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, thanks, all right, number nine.
Number one.
One.
A.
Yes.
A, A, right, there we go.
All right, and then number ten.
A.
Also A.
A, okay.
Have to change between one and A, a letter, really quickly, all right, we're moving on to number eleven.
So A.
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 And then twelve.
A. A.
Thirteen.
A.
A.
Fourteen.
A.
And then fifteen. And this got us, because it can, at least going to.
That's the diversity one, was that D?
Yes, the diversity.
Right.
The inclusion and diversity one, that's B, I believe.
B, diversity, inclusion is B.
All right, it's very small, Ashley, I cannot even see them. Okay.
All right. Number fifteen.
A.
Yeah.
Oh, sixteen?
Sixteen.
Yes.
Ten is A, yeah.
Sixteen. Is A, and then lastly is number seventeen.
B.
B. B, inclusion and diversity, whatever.
Yeah. So we kind of made it through this initial list, I think that maybe get, get some thoughts on afterthoughts. One, one quick afterthought that I had, and the reason I was kind of really thinking about some of the ones that had diversity, equity and inclusion, was I was trying to figure out what could go under truth and reconciliation, because there's, there's only one item so far under there, and so.
May I throw out a comment?
Yes.
To me, that truth and reconciliation commission is, is a big project of its own. I think it's a really big project of its own, and I think, you know, as we dig into that deeper and get a commission, if you don't mind, I'm just going to take a second to, to share with the council some ideas that have been proposed to me by some community members, and that is that potentially, we, we look at some, while we obviously appoint people to that commission, that we look at some outside assistance for that commission with some people with some real expertise. One suggestion has been, this is nothing official, it's just, it's just throwing out the suggestion at this point, is the Oberman Center at the university. I've also been informed that there is a staff or faculty member at the university that has significant experience with truth and reconciliation commissions. So I think using those kinds of resources could really help us to make sure that that truth and reconciliation commission has the right resources to really, to really do the kind of work that we want to help promote those stories and healing within the community, and I'm certainly no expert on that at all. And along with that, and this might come either from council or from that truth and reconciliation commission, was the idea of really trying to encourage and invite organizations within the community to kind of be a part of that and do their own self-study, if you will, and in fact, the Iowa City Downtown District mentioned this this afternoon on their annual report meeting, who, and and I would include in that, you know, our financial institutions, our healthcare institutions, our educational institutions, to really encourage and and cajole, if you will, them to very much become a part of this and do some real self-reflection within their organizations, because as we all know, systemic racism is not something that is just under the control or can be cured by city government. This is, this is, that's why we call it systemic. And so I think that truth and reconciliation commission, while it's a category of its own, may in fact be the, in some ways, the biggest and most important thing that we can do to actually impact systemic racism in our community.
I, I agree with Councilor Memes, I, as I'd mentioned earlier, I think it's one of the things, one of the places where we need to start is to get, get that up and running, because I kind of see it as something that's going to oversee all of the other groups too, to make sure that they're on track, and and she mentioned some of the resources we have in our community, and and it'll, it would take us forever if we wanted to start from square one, but we, we need to, yeah, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, we need to utilize those resources that we have out there so that we can get up and running right away.
All right, so. I'll go right ahead, Mayor Protem.
I really want to talk about something else, not this item, if you want to talk about this one, you can go ahead.
Um, I was, I was, I was going to make a comment about this, but I think also I wanted to, since we had Counselor Memes talking about moving forward, I did want to maybe pull up if Kelly would, IFR, the letter that we, the email that we received from them today, I at least wanted to bring that up to share what they stated, so that that can also be in the thoughts and minds of counselors and a part of the conversation. So this is what they wrote, and I'll go ahead and read it. So this from.
Because what I want to say is, after you say, like, you have afterthought, after bringing all this item and.
Sure.
Before, because this is like one, I don't want to, like, move before I say this, you know, just by, by looking at all the item that we, we put them under the number one, is a lot of item. And all of them is referred to the Iowa City Police Department. It does not refer to any other public safety department. So this by itself proves that the work that we need to do is with Iowa City Police Department, not other department. That's why I really encourage this committee to call, you know, we call it as it is, policing.
Any comments on categories, and we can go back to that screen for now? Because we can go through the categories. So we have. In regards to.
I'm sorry, I guess for me, when you look at number six, and we have that under the public safety slash policing, those legislative priorities go well beyond just the Iowa City Police Department. That's really trying to change policy at the state level, that will allow us to do some things differently, the impact our Community Police Review Board, you know, legislation relating to marijuana and different things. So there's not a lot necessarily in here that goes beyond specifically related to our police, but to me, there is some that goes beyond it, and I, and I also do like what Counselors Burgess and Weiner have said about also focus, trying to focus even with the title, not necessarily quote what the problem is today, but what we're trying to move forward to, so by having the, the combination of the wording of public safety slash policing, I think can really reflect both of those, that we're, we're focusing on what the issues are that are a problem, but we're also trying to move forward to a much better model that includes a lot of different things.
But which one that you said it is referring to other than, everything that you said that advocating was that Iowa Legislature is regarding the police department, you know, it is still saying that the moron regarding the police department, BCRP is regarding the police department, everything that in there, it is regarding the police department. I, I guess if you just give me one category that will talk about the fire department, as Laura said in her report, saying that, I guess what she is, is this includes the police and the fire department, but we said, God, you know, this is will be like abortion, but this is not anything here for the fire department. And even the, the one that you just read about, the legislator is not regarding any other public safety department except the police. Why we want just to put another word there to distract us from the focus?
To me, it's broader, I'm sorry, go ahead, Janice.
Because Mayor Protem, for me, and this is my perspective, for me, it really is about looking forward and figuring out what models are going to work for the community as a whole. If the current policing model is not working, then we need to figure out a broader, a, we have to reimagine it, think about what parts of it, who may, who may be doing what, who's no longer an armed sworn officer, and that's where public safety comes into it for me, I want, for example, can we have, do we have a different team, sort of like the crisis, current crisis management, who can, who are not armed, who would go out and, and, and respond when there is a mental health crisis, or someone with an overdose, or to check on someone who is homeless or for a welfare check, to me, that's a broader category of public safety, and that's where I want to head. I don't, I honestly don't want to get wrapped up in semantics, but I do think it's important that we think about this as if, as a undertaking to create what we want for the future, which involves obviously dealing with what we have now and creating a broader framework, so that's where, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Yes, could you, yes, could you explain for me now, I really don't understand that, when you say somebody would check, you know, you mean the access center for the mental health, who will check, who, from which department that person will be checking, not like a community body, I saw the community police type of, they will be doing that kind of job. And, but can you just tell me exactly what another public safety department will do that job? So this should be here.
I don't know, I don't know, because we haven't, we haven't fleshed it out yet, I don't know.
We are not here to work for the whole, you know, we are here specifically for Black Lives Matter, for Black. I understand that we have to work for the whole community, no problem, but we are not, this demand came for Black Lives Matter, and the Black Lives Matter is their problem is with the police department, you know, is now with another public safety. We can, we can still work on this, no problem, we, if you want us to work in another public safety department for the whole community, we can do that better, but let us just have a committee that focus only on the police department. And if we want to create another committee outside of this resolution to look into another public safety, why not? Why wanted to distract ourselves?
I don't want to get stuck on the, the, the title of, I'm, I'm fine if it's called policing, I just wanted to make sure we actually talked about if, if this is coming in response to calls from the community to defund the police, if we focus only on the fact that we've got, you know, twelve out of seventeen items that relate to the police department, I think if we dig into that, and certainly what I, what I think our commitment is, a lot of those items about the police department are, are interim measures to get us to progress on number one, which is the restructuring of the police towards community policing, meaning, you know, the specific things that we said in our resolution. So I, again, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's a, you know, it's not a hill that I'm willing to die on, or it's not worth it to me, you know, as far as that word, but I don't want us to just say, you know, we've got all these items that relates to the police, because if we start patting ourselves on the back for like publishing the budget, well, that's, that's like bare minimum, right, so we really want to focus on number one, that's the big item. And, and I think the, all of these other ones that are sort of underneath it just feed into our progress towards number one, that's how I see the numerous category A, whatever we call it, items that we have.
Well, thinking about that and looking at this item, I almost think, we almost need a separate category, just legislation, because some of these things are things that this group, even if we have a, a committee or subcommittee titled public safety or policing, they can't do without changing things at the state level. I'm thinking even one of the requests of the IFR was the legalization of the marijuana, which we would have to look at at that pretty seriously and see, you know, what, what level is it, just a blanket saying legalizing marijuana possession, et cetera, those kinds of things, that, that kind of falls under that, the, the use of force, even the CPRB, reconstruction of the CPRB, there was that state ruling about the subpoena of, of the officer being able to subpoena. So that, that's kind of more a legislative thing that, that we need to look at that, rather than the subcommittee.
I'm going to come back in once, because I was cut off. In the end, to me, what it's called doesn't matter so much as long as we focus on the intent. I don't know where, when we have, for example, let's say we end up with unarmed people who are very much like our current crisis, the current crisis response unit that exists, but we end up with several of those. I don't know what category they're going to fall in, I don't know who is going to be in charge of them. I assume that, that we're going to have to have sort of an overall review with the jack of dispatch and who sends out, who sends out whom, but the reason that I was focused the way I was is because I believe it's a bigger umbrella issue that ultimately, and that ultimately, we hope to move forward on, and I don't want to get stuck on the present or on the past, I want to be able to move forward.
Yeah, I think for me.
I'm just going to follow up on, on your comments, I, I don't think it's certainly worth debating this question if policing, Moz, if you feel that's important. I'm, I'm, I'll be supportive of that, but I, it does raise for me a, a real concern how the, you know, the, this, this resolution is heavily weighted, as you can obviously, we can all obviously see toward actions related to the police department, and my hope is, while that's obviously a very critical issue, that we pivot and begin to look at those issues that I mentioned, that we're now falling under diversity, equity and inclusion, that, that. That, that to me is where the action is as well. And, you know, I'm concerned that this resolution, again, it's an, it's an initial step. I hope with our subsequent steps, we start focusing on the diversity, equity and inclusion at what I refer to as opportunity, because that's, that sounds critical if we're going to be successful.
So for me, and there's a lot here that talks about police. And I think restructuring the police is what we're talking about. What we're talking about, if it's going to be social workers, we don't know what is going to play into. So whether we just have the word police, policing, restructuring the police, I, I think the word police needs to be there somewhere in that category. So I don't know if people prefer any of those. I'm hearing more that people would be amenable to the word just police. And so if we want to leave it at police, or do we want to say policing, restructuring the police, or are we just going to leave it at police?
I think we talk a lot about this. Let us, everybody say what they want, and so we can move on. As a black person, I will feel comfortable calling restructuring the police department, because that's what we are supposed to do in these categories. And don't call it something else, call it the same thing. And, and you know, maybe Mayor, you can just be, call those people and ask them what they think and we can move on. Because that's what I believe, black person, and that's what would make me feel comfortable for Black Lives Matter.
I want to just get clarification, did you say restructuring the police?
Yes, because that's what we're going to do.
As far as the title?
Yes.
All right.
I would say that some of the categories we talked about, I, I appreciate your comments, Mazzy here, but some of these things such as the body cameras and, and those items, duty to interview, it is separate from the actually restructuring. I, I would be in favor of if, if you want that word in there to say policing.
I, I, could I make one comment that I didn't make earlier? I know that you had mentioned like there are some legislative things in here even from number six. As far as, I think that some of this stuff can be moved around. If we found that the truth and reconciliation wanted to take on like the legislative items, and even what you just mentioned, if we wanted to, you know, shift that somewhere else, I think that can be done. I think if we can focus on the title, the, the, the grand title for this one. So the question would be, you know, where do you want to be? Do you want to be with police, policing, restructuring the police or public safety? And I think everybody is off public safety, but which one of those three?
I'm still where I was. I, I think this is broader than just policing. I realize that that's the biggest emphasis here and it's a crucial emphasis of that. But I think it's broader than that. And I, I like what Janice and Laura were thinking about initially in terms of also looking forward and the idea that really some of that restructuring is public safety and pulling some of those things out of the police department. So I like the combination of public safety slash policing. I think it gives us both of those pieces.
All right. So I have Councilor Mims, Mayor Protem, and if I, I, I think I heard Counselor Taylor say policing. All right. Anyone else? Who's next?
I did say policing. I like Councilmember Mims' argument about the public safety. Because as I'd said earlier, some of these things aren't really restructuring. It's just holding to, holding them to the policy of the body cams, et cetera. So that would fall probably under the public safety. The public safety, I do like that.
But that's police, public safety. It's not like fire department, public safety. You know, I, I really don't understand exactly you, how you guys look into it. What I saying, the body camera is the police is the one who putting the body camera, not the firefighter. That's mean is under policing.
So we'll get some more.
No, I, I really, you know, want them to know exactly what I meant. Because yes, I, I understand what you're saying, Council Taylor, that, you know, that this is a public safety, but public safety, who is wearing the camera? It's the police and it will be part of that discussion. But you know, when you say public safety, you mean beyond the police? You mean that the, the fire department, maybe? That's why, you know, I, I really, that's what I mean exactly. Please think about what we want to do. This is restructuring the police department and also, you know, figuring out a way for camera, for public safety and everything. But when she said public safety department, that's not only the police.
Can I add something in here just from student perspective?
Yes.
Help a little bit? So, um, because I see just some, some wires getting crossed here. And I think maybe, at least from students, from, from what I hear and from what personally I, I agree with and advocate for is, we agree that there needs to be significant changes in the police department and agree and support everything that IFR has listed. And I think that's an important part. But like some of the counselors have said, we don't want police responding to a lot of different things. If someone has a mental health episode, we don't want police with a gun to respond to that. If someone is simply having a verbal dispute with someone else, we don't want a person with a gun coming responding to that. And so I think that's what, at least I'm gained from counselors Weiner and Burgess, is that they want to create a whole new public safety department that is outside of the police that responds to those, so that the police have a more narrow scope of what their job is for. And that way, the people in the community, particularly people of color, feel more safe by not having to interact with someone who could, you know, kill them. And so that's kind of why I, I, I like the public safety and policing part. And that's just because there are things that I think council needs to change immediately in the police department and that need to stay there. But then I agree, I think it goes beyond that in that there needs to be new public safety measures and departments created to respond to those kinds of, those kinds of calls. And I don't know for sure what that looks like. And I think that's kind of what everyone's figuring out. But I agree that needs to be a part of it and that's what students are looking for.
I, I do want to, I do want to respond. So again, I think anytime we're talking about mental health, not having the police involved, if we're talking about any of these things where we're going to be changing how the act of policing happens, we're still talking about the police. And I think restructuring the police as the title is at least what Mayor Protem has stated. Every one of the items that we have under public safety and slash police is there. If people, I, I want to continue with every counselor. So thanks, Brian, for chiming in. But I do want to continue with the, with every counselor saying where they want to be. So, so far I have public safety slash police with Councilor Mims and Taylor. I have restructuring the police with Mayor Protem and myself.
The last thing I want to add here before I can just don't say anything. You know, I, I really think, Ryan, what you said is great. But this is not the FIR demand, not IFR demand, because this is something else we needed. Definitely we needed, but we need to do it outside this time. We need to do it in the next city council meeting and talk about it. But right now, the item number one, just read it again. It just says restrictions of police department. They talking about the, the way that the police track and treat black people. It's not talking about mental health right now. It's not talking about anything, but we seeing across the country, police killing the black people. That I'm not saying that the, the police came to a black people with a, you know, with a gun and the black people has a, that person has a mental health or anything. We are specifically talking about the practice that the police, you know, being doing toward black people and people of color. I understand that what you're talking about. Yes, we don't want to respond to a mental health, a person who suffered from mental health with, does somebody have a gun in his pocket? No, I, I don't mean that, but we can work on this. This is have to be a separate topic. You know, but it's still, we're talking about policing. Or maybe it can be in this topic, but it's still on the police department. And we tell the police department need to do so.
I think it isn't. Yeah, no, I think it's in this topic. I think restructuring the police, you know, mental health, community policing is in this topic. Any other comment, didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's fine, yeah, that, that, that's true. It is, at the end of the day, you're saying that you don't want the police to respond to a mental health person with a, with a gun. That's true. That's why we, we need to restructure the police department and tell them that. But when, when you say public safety, can you just, somebody can give me different, what's the definition of public safety? What consider public safety in the community?
I think the intent of public safety is, is people feeling safe, is people feeling safe. And that's, and that's what we're, I think that's what we're responding to in understanding that people do not feel safe with our current way of policing, at least. Or from, right? I mean, is that, that, that's, that's why I use the term public safety is, is safety in the community. And what we're talking about right now is the black community needing to feel safe. So that, that's literally what, what my intention was. I really don't want to get hung up on the name. If the majority council wants it to be restructure the police, I'm all for it.
I guess I will ask you now, where would you, where would you like to be? Or do you want to wait to comment?
And I, I would like it to be category A in the way that we've set it out with the 17. I do not care what the words are. I think, I think we're in agreement on what the items that we adopted in the resolution would fall within that category A.
Okay.
I, I really don't.
So it sound like you can go either public safety, police or restructuring the police if I.
Yes, Mayor.
All right. All right.
I was leaning toward policing or police.
Policing is fine. I do want to say that, that, that some, some of the things that, that you just mentioned, Mayor Protem, that's not, that we're not in the situation here in Iowa City where, where we have police killing people of color. We're starting from a, there are issues, there are enormous issues to deal with, but I'm fine with policing.
I have to say to answer that, you know, I, I did not say in Iowa City. I said in Iowa City, people are suffer, you know, like complaining about the way that police treat them. And across the country, we seeing policing, you know, police is killing black people. Am I right or they are not killing black people?
Absolutely, you are right. I'm just trying to avoid conflation, that's all, that's, that's all. Because the, because I know that, I know among other things right now that, that our police are taking a lot from the community. They're getting death threats, other things are happening. And so I would just sort of like to focus in on our community.
Okay, so it sounds like Thomas and Weiner want the word policing. So Burgess is. So if, it sounds like is, is really between restructuring the police or policing to me. So Burgess, where do you want to be? Because I, I think it's going to, we're going to. I, I would, I, I think what I would say is we're, we're restructuring the police.
Can I give you another one, Mayor? Maybe, can, can we say addressing policing and future of public safety?
I think that sounds fine.
Awesome. Okay.
So three, I can, I can live with that.
That's fine with me.
All right.
I like, yeah, I like the inclusion of addressing the future, because that also does take in those legislative issues. Because looking at the future and, and getting the legislator to change some of those rules that need to be changed. I like that.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, let us go, I did at least want to, if it is okay, I'll have IFR. Because I think we need to go into the next conversation. I, I, I know that we got this letter, the public don't have it. So I think I should have read it for, for now. I will also state that there is a lot of people that have weighed in on this, at least to me personally, and I've talked to other counselors who, I've talked to people from various social justice that have labored in this, that really, really want to be a part of the movement and a part of what council does. So to those individuals, I, I won't mention you specifically tonight, but I know that your interest is there as well. So for the Black Lives Matter, here is what they, they wrote to council. And I at least wanted it to appear to the public so that they know the letter that we're referring to. I did want to point out that IFR mentioned. Well, I'll just read it. "We have created four work groups to address the implementation of city demands. These groups are composed of Iowa Freedom Riders and other community university experts who are prepared to offer research, education and policy proposal. The Police and Housing Truth and Reconciliation Commission, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. At your June 30th meeting, please assign council members, member liaisons to each of these groups. IFR and our community partners are committed to provide implementation steps for each of the year 17 resolutions as needed. Having council member liaisons will improve communication and create opportunities for deeper learning. Also, at your June 30th meeting, we ask that rather than specific goals, timelines or next steps, you discuss the process that you undertake to ensure that Iowa Freedom Riders and members of the black communities in Iowa cities are welcome, included in and have access to your full council discussion of these demands. We see this applicable by having a permanent seat for IFR at the table." So I wanted to read that because I know that the public don't know that, that this letter was sent to council. We've been alluding to parts of it a little bit. And I guess my, my, my personal response would be as far as some of the things in here. I plan to, you know, definitely have conversations with IFR, also have conversations with other people within the community that want to weigh in on this. I think right now, my personal charge is for, for council to move forward with now looking at, we've kind of put the things in categories. So now we probably need to discuss those groups. We do have IFR who have made comments, so it's free game for anybody to make comment about that. I, I personally think that council needs to set and move forward how we envision who's going to be at the table and how do we get them to the table? And I think that's kind of our next conversation. In which Counselor Mims had started to mention, you know, and I'll just rephrase what she stated, looking at an expert with experience to come in and maybe be, you know, a part of the truth and reconciliation commission to kind of help facilitate that. There are some more things that she mentioned. But one thing that I know is that there are people in the community, individuals in the, in the community, people of color in the community that are individuals or social justice groups that are, you know, have been really waiting for some type of opportunity like this, like Black Voices Project. Our Human Rights Commissioners, I mean, they've been reaching out to me and wanting to be a part as well, CPRB. So I, I think we have opportunity here to really make great strides. And I think that's where we are next, to talk about who, how we're going to do that process of inviting people to the table and giving everybody opportunity. So we'll go back to our, our past slide, please. So we'll go back to our our past slide, please.
Mayor, if I could, I think if, yes, they're sharing that. You know, as I've talked to some of you over the last few days, and I've looked at these seventeen steps. And my comments, you know, earlier tonight were directed particularly towards the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, because I do think that is so big, complex, important. But when I look at the the remaining sixteen, my my perception is that there are a few of those that we could kind of check off pretty quickly and easily that don't necessarily require maybe any more time and effort on council's part, but we would want follow-up reports on from staff. Some of the oh, I'm just looking at these number ten. You know, the the letter on military grade equipment. I don't know if that's been done yet, but we've decided we want to do that. Some of the general orders that we've said, no chokeholds, the police misconduct related to house file, et cetera. So there there's certain ones in there that I'm wondering if we could kind of say, you know what, we've we've already directed staff, this is what we want done. Report back from city manager that it's been done. And then maybe, like I say, quarterly, semi-annual, annual, I don't know, reports on those sorts of things. Then some of the others, I think we have to discuss in detail. And I wonder if we are potentially going to need some ad hoc committees established to work on some of these, which might mean that we need to do a process like with the Truth and Reconciliation Commission in terms of asking people to apply. And that we appoint people to those, you know, ad hoc committees to work on one or maybe two or three of these particular items if we can group them together. Because there's a lot here to do.
I think that's a good idea, Councilor Mims. I keep thinking of our our Climate Action Commission. And I think they did an excellent job of of doing just that. They they broke themselves down into different categories of groups in whichever people were interested in. Say, the communication or working with the businesses, and they fell into those categories. Rather than the whole group trying to tackle the whole big issue, they they narrowed that down and and each group focused on certain topics. So I agree with you on that.
All right, so do we want to think about the broad topic of each one of the A through? What do we have, D? Categories, how we envision next steps as far as groups and how we'll do that? I I think because Councilor Mims did bring it up. What items here can we sort of take off the list? I know that number ten, eleven, sixteen, and seventeen are some that can come off the list. And in response to number seventeen, the holiday will be set, right? So that's off the list. That will still be of discussion when, and I'm trying to figure out which group. Maybe it's the Truth and Reconciliation, or, you know, to go on to Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, where they'll talk about, you know, that well-being that that was just mentioned about what will happen in the community on Juneteenth next year. So I do feel that those are kind of done personally. I don't know if there's anything else that people see. Number four, we know that we'll be, you know, getting a report. And I don't know if staff want to update now, or we're going to have this one, we're going to have this a part of our agenda every every work session moving forward is my assumption. So at least with number ten, eleven, and sixteen and seventeen, I feel like those are things that don't need to be on the list because they're
Well, what about twelve, thirteen, and fourteen? Are there things with those that we still really need to discuss? Or are those pretty set with what we've directed staff to do? And do we just need to report back? I'm not, I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just kind of asking that question.
And even even like number, even the things that were taken off the list, there'll still be conversations about them. Up under whatever that category is. I think what you just referenced is council don't have to spend time, you know, discussing those.
Would the rest of council agree that like ten through fourteen are more report-back type of items?
Mayor and council, may I chime in for a quick second here?
Yes.
Several of those items already have procedures in place. So for example, the CPRB already reviews all updates to general orders that the police department makes. So in the last twelve months, you may not know this, but the CPRB has reviewed the use of force, and they have reviewed other general orders as well, including the body camera policy. That's a routine practice that has already been in place. So our intention, based on your resolution, was to update these policies again, and per normal practice, take those to the CPRB for review and comment. And if needed, go back at the staff level and make some adjustments based on those comments. So those all do become public record. And of course, because they're a part of your resolution, we would keep you and the public apprised of how that process is working. So I agree that you don't necessarily need to be involved in items, say, eleven through fourteen, which are updating GOs. You need to be kept informed. And certainly, if you see something, even that you, if you see something you've got questions about or that you don't agree with, even if the CPRBD, CPRB did agree with, you could step in and direct staff. But I don't think you need to spend a whole lot of time or ask a new committee to do that because you already have the CPRB that's charged with that. There's a number of other nuances to some of these items that that probably aren't going to be on your radar that, again, staff can help you with, and we can facilitate. So for example, the the Juneteenth holiday is not as simple as just declaring declaring a holiday. Holidays are mandatory subjects of bargaining for some of our collective bargaining units. So we need to go back to those unions and have those discussions and create side letters with those unions that have existing contracts to try to make that change. Again, that's nothing necessarily that the council needs to be directly involved with or that a committee of the public needs to be involved with. But just just know that it's it's oftentimes going to be a little bit more complicated, or there may be a few administrative steps that need to take place in order for us to completely check a box on these items.
So I did want to at least expound upon what I was mentioning when, you know, like checking these things off the list is not that they totally go off the list. Like, there'll be some follow-up, but it, like, I don't think that council needs to kind of focus in on this when we're thinking about the groups that are going to be created. Because that could, if you have maybe a narrow picture of what the resolutions that we're addressing and what type of groups we're needing, if we can cross some of these things off the list that, yeah, it may go back to that group, you know, the reports that CPR brings about the body cams and that type stuff. Because we already have it in the resolution specifics of of what's to be there. So I wonder if there's any other item that we want to, you know, kind of take off the list for us not to have in the mix when we're thinking about groups moving forward.
Mayor, you had mentioned number sixteen, city manager did not. Jeff, is number sixteen something that, with the direction that we've given you with the resolution that would also be set to go back through the general order process with CPRV or not? Or is that something that needs more city council discussion?
Yeah, certainly, we've, we would need to go through all of our general orders and standard operating guidelines within the police department and make sure that that's fully addressed. That's that's part of the process that's ongoing right now. It may not be that that shows up in an existing GO. It could be a new general order, or again, some some standard guidelines that need to be adjusted. So that one's not as completely straightforward, just from a policy standpoint as the use of force or the body camera policy. But certainly, the direction has been provided. It's just a matter of us codifying that in some manner right now.
Mayor, I just wanted to jump in about process for a moment because I I just want to be careful how we're talking about things that are sort of on the list or off the list. I agree with you that what we're looking for is the the things that won't take as much direct council involvement or necessarily creating a new organization or infrastructure to do the review to get to the point where we feel like these items have been completed. But just to be very clear for anyone who's who's listening, the the process will continue to be public and transparent. And we're not saying, like, take it off the list, like, we're done, we're not going to look at it again. So just, I think, understanding the processes that are in place with something as large as this resolution, I think it's really incumbent on us to to find the places where we can leverage the resources that we do have. And we've already said, okay, the CPRB needs to be, you know, itself undertake a review and see if we can, you know, enhance its power. But its purpose in reviewing general orders of the police department, I think that's really you know, that that will make us more effective and make us more efficient. And certainly, you know, I I hope everyone subscribes to the city newsletters that tell them when the next CPRB meeting is happening and that they are looking at the agenda for that and that they are tracking when that is, you know, going in front of them and so that they can participate as they see fit. I just want to be really clear that we're not trying to, you know, take it off the list or say that it's already completed or exclude participation from people who are interested in how that's going to go down.
Thank you. And if I could just piggyback on that a little bit. Counselor Weiner and I each individually had conversations with the city manager this week. And as a result of those conversations, asking about just kind of process and and transparency and stuff, Jeff shared, I believe, with each of us, a document that the staff has already started putting together that basically tracks each of these seventeen and that I believe they're getting, they're getting ready to put up on the website. So if I could, I'd like to ask Jeff maybe to explain that to the rest of council because I think that really will address your comments, Laura, about the importance of transparency and people understanding that with the conversation we're have, but that we are having, we are not ignoring any of these items. It's just how they're going to be dealt with. But that tracking that that staff is proposing and their form they're using will really facilitate that transparency, both for us and the public. So maybe, Jeff, you could explain that to council.
Sure. Well, it's very common with any significant undertaking like this that there's regular update reports that are provided to the council and to the public. We do so with varying frequency on a number of items, like your strategic plan or maybe a Parks and Rec master plan, bike master plan, all those types of efforts, your climate plan. You'll get regular reports on. So the public can track where we are with regards to the commitments that the city has made. So as staff, we've already started to pull together that document. And as Susan described, it is a a document that contains each of the seventeen actions. And and very generally, we'll have the exact language from the resolution on there, a summary of where we currently stand and making progress towards that, an outline of next steps. So that could be a future council meeting, a future CPRB meeting where the public could participate. It could be community outreach events. But a list of which ones would be applicable to that item, and then a list of any accomplishments. So as as you've really finished some of these items, no matter how small they may be, like, for example, Mayor, you've already sent the letter to the sheriff's office on the MRAP vehicle. So then we would list that under the accomplishments, and someone could then download a copy of that letter to see that themselves. That framework is already already in place. And then we're building, we're building the content now. And our intention was to take away anything we can from your discussion tonight, infuse that in the report, and publish that on Monday prior to your July seventh, your Tuesday, July seventh council meeting. So that that is already in the works and and we'll be able to, we'll be able to meet that goal of getting it up on Monday after we're after we're done with the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, so for the, so how do we envision, really, there's a lot of work to be done. So how do we envision formulating these these groups, commissions? We already know what truth, what a Truth and Reconciliation Commission, as far as the process, could be. Of course, there's always the bureaucracy of of city government that we have to behold ourselves to. There has to be transparency. And there also has to be opportunity within the within the public to weigh in on it or to have opportunity. And so maybe truth and reconciliation might be the easiest one to tackle.
I I guess when I add something about this committee that the IFR is already working. I I talked to them, and they already working with the Center for Human Rights Commission of University of Iowa. And, you know, to prepare the Truth and Reconciliation Committee, and they have begun making plans for how they can involve business, number of the organization, university, Black Voices projects, and like a lot of community. So I I think we need just a way that how can those people reach out to us and tell us what they do? I understand that maybe they they did not done a very good job of communicating with us. But also, we make it hard for them to communicate because we don't have, they cannot come and talk today in this, like, work session, for example. And they don't know exactly what we're going to be discussing on 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 today's meeting. I I just believe that they are the one who come with these recommendations. Let us make them well-involved in creating those committee.
Well, at least from my perspective, as far as the opportunities for IFR to be on the committees, I I think that you're you're exactly right. They have, they have been very influential in, you know, getting council to move, right? On the demands and the things that, you know, the seventeen items. Some, they asked specifically for some, council heard from other people in the community, and we put into the resolution. And so I I do believe that we can certainly have space, reserve space, somewhat somewhat of what we've done in the past for any type of a group. Like for the, when we did the Climate Action Commission, we had eleven spots. We looked at the three people that use the most electricity in the community. We gave them reserved spots, and then we selected the nine. So for me, I believe that when we're talking about any of these groups, we can certainly reserve spots for people, Black, Iowa Freedom Riders, but also any of those groups that we know that have been in the community that have been about social justice, such as Black Voices Project that was just mentioned. And and whether, we don't totally know all those groups is not like, for the Climate Action, we know who uses the most electricity, right? So we know that. Council may think that we know who's been kind of those champions within our community for social justice and rights for people of color. So I do believe that we, you know, open up the process for the Reconciliation Commission, and we invite groups to participate as well as individuals. And, you know, maybe that group, they, maybe we say we want eleven spots. Four of those spots are going to be, you know, from groups within the community. And then the others will be appoint appointment. So or maybe we, you know, don't make that limitation and just say, let's see what we get and then we go from there. So everybody have an opportunity, all the groups, all the individuals within the community. You know, come and apply for the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, and then we go from there. But that is my personal thought for Truth and Reconciliation Commission.
I think that's a good idea, Bruce. And I think because we don't all necessarily know all the different groups, it might be hard to upfront, you know, say that we're going to reserve X number of spots. Maybe one approach would be, as we advertise and and get the word out about people applying for this, one of the things maybe that we could do is encourage that if you if you are applying to represent an organization that maybe you solicit letters or signatures of other members of that organization to indicate that you are in fact their choice to represent that particular group. And if you don't do that, then you're considered simply an individual applicant. That might help us in terms of making sure, for example, that, you know, we don't end up with ten people from Black Voices or, and I'm just using that as an example, but that we really make sure the way that we get a really diverse representation across the community, across the black population, et cetera. But if they really are there to represent an organization, to have some other documentation with it from the people in that organization, say, hey, this is our person that we're putting forward that we really want to represent us on the commission.
I do hear what you're saying. And 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 I think certainly we want to make sure that we get the word out that there needs to be a collective agreement on who will be the representative representative from that organization. I think, you know, if we should, at least this is my initial thought, I think we can, you know, get the word out. And if we should get, you know, two applicants, it's kind of hard when it's last minute, right? But if we should get more than one at one applicant from the same organization, maybe then we find out who that organizational leadership is and we reach out to them. And because there should be some type of email or we, if if we have that capacity. Now, this could be like a lot of our, you know, some of our commissions, we can get fifty applicants. I know that the involvement from the community right now has been great. And so there could be a lot of applicants coming in. But I hear what you're saying. And I think that potentially if we did get that, maybe we can seek some clarification without having that stipulation.
Mayor, can I interrupt for a minute?
Yes.
Just as a reminder, the first step in creating a commission is typically doing a resolution that creates the charge to that commission. And so in thinking about workflow here, you might want to talk about who it is you would like, whether that's a group of subset of council, staff, et cetera, to do a draft of that resolution and what you would like it to include.
I, yes. One of the things that, at least from our counselors that I've been getting and even from the public is that people want to weigh in on what that what that charge would be. And so with that being said, we can certainly, as council, talk about that. But I also feel that we don't have to get into the nitty gritty of that. We can certainly say that we'll bring that to a an opportunity for the public to weigh in on an agenda item. And then they weigh in on what that charge will be. And then we have conversations there because I think we can, we don't want to get too much into the details because I feel that we need to have the public weigh in on that.
Well, and and I think that's fine, but we need to have the direction as to if if there's a desire for public input on that item to, as your staff, set up that meeting and request public input. So that's the kind of direction that if 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 we're going to move forward on some of these items, we're going to have to get.
I, yes, I appreciate that.
Mayor, I guess I really wasn't know that we're going to into details. And I I thought we are just going to agree to them, like which committee we need to like do like the the A B C that we did, like four committee or five. And also we want to talk about which we need from the staff to report to us with it. And after that, we give chance to the public because I really would love the the public to tell us how we can come up with those, you know, commissions. I I don't know whether it is the city commission or whether it is like, you know, I I really don't know. However, the public want to do. That's why I think it is is it's time just to leave it out of it. And we just wait for the public to come and tell us how can we do this? Because we are not going to say, no, you you're going to have only one person from one organization. You are going to have only like, no, this is not our call, by the way. This is a public call and they have to tell us how can we come up with this. We being here forever, the staff being there forever, city council was here and we did not resist demand. And we did not work on that from ourselves. We waited until like somebody else came and bring it, then that's a public. Then let the public come up with with the rest of the step, like how can we move forward with those, you know, commissions, whether they send us something, they come, as a mayor said, a public comment during a meeting. I don't know how, but we have to make the public involved on like how can we move forward.
Well, I think on this particular item, most important input needs to come from the I the I F R people, the folks on there because this this came from them, this specific request came from them. And we really need to know, you know, what they they had on mind, what 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 do they think that this group, Truth and Reconciliation, could accomplish. So I think, you know, posting it and saying, we want your input. But I think they would understand more truly than the general public as such, what what this means.
I just wanted to say that Ryan and I are in contact with some I F R members and they already have like a lot of ideas and framework ideas about what they want the Truth and Reconciliation Commission to be. And I think it's important that they like have a seat, you know, during these meetings so they can, because they're already like steps ahead on like a lot of this stuff. And I think if we had them in click included, we could definitely just, you know, the change could be coming faster. And they have like a lot of the details laid out for this commission. And whether it's not all I F R members and it's like a variation of different groups throughout the Iowa City community, I think that to get this ball rolling, I think that if we just give them a spot, we can definitely see what they already have and what they want.
And just to add to what Anna said, that, you know, they are reaching to a lot of group and they still, but they did not, they did not finish. They did not reach to like, there is many, many community that they are intend to reach to. But, you know, they are doing this work of reaching out to the community that, you know, we would like to hear from them. I think, you know, in the same time, we can open it to any another organization who would like to come and say, hey, I would like to be part of this. Not only the, you know, I'm not saying only the I F R, but the I F R is already being reaching to a lot of, I'm talking with a lot of organization. So we can also open it to any community that by maybe for any reasons, the I F R did not reach to them. But, you know, but let us start with them.
And Mayor Proton, you mentioned earlier the communication challenges, maybe that 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 we've had. And I think when we're talking about the steps that the city council can implement, I I just want to, I want to try and keep our focus on what the city council is intending to do, is trying to do. And, you know, making sure that we're we're able to get to a point that we're facilitating broader community change, but still understanding that we are the elected representatives of the entire city. And so, you know, how how recommendations and presentations and that kind of thing get get brought to us. I mean, I I think having like the liaisons that they were asking for so that we can, you know, have maybe a few counselors who are able to take time in between our meetings and to help facilitate that presentation back to council. I mean, I think that's really, that's what I'm looking for. You know, I I have reached out to them and not gotten any response. And so, you know, I think it's it's important that we enhance that communication and, you know, be able to talk with, you know, whoever they're willing to put forward as as a as a representative, but not just in this context of like what this conversation would be. I think it needs to be the, you know, getting to work in these, the the kind of, I don't know if you want to call them with the categories, the categories that we just came up with. I think that's, that's really important to kind of take that out of just the bureaucracy of these particular meetings.
Yes, I agree with you. Yeah.
So I think one of the, one of the hopes for the meeting today was definitely to kind of put things in categories. The other hope was for us to have the initial conversation of how do we envision the categories, the groups? Like, so truth and reconciliation, certainly, we, the commission, we have a process for commissions. Not to say that we do things the same way all the time, but we have a process for a commission. So we can certainly, if we're going to, you know, open it up to the public to kind of weigh in on what that charge will be because that's our next step in order to start a commission, then we can certainly wait to talk about, you know, how do we do that application process and and get some ideas from the public? Because we can't open up the, we can't open up the the commission until we have the charge ready. As far as the housing, diversity, equity and inclusion, and then the addressing policing. And I I need to get that official title, Mayor Proton, what was that title that you addressing policing and future of public safety?
And the future of public safety.
Okay. You know, so the, I I think we need to start the conversations about what does the groups look like, even if we don't make final decisions today? Or do we wait and kind of allow that to come from the public as well, since we have the four categories? But I do want council to weigh in on what what we feel are next steps.
I I would think that, for example, with respect to creating a commission for the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, that we can probably manage to walk and chew gum at the same time. And what I mean by that is is consider doing what what the city attorney suggested, which is put together a small group of us to start putting together the the structure and charge and at the same time, talk to I F R and and get their ideas into that as well as other members of the community so that we can, we will then have the structure of the prepared so that it can be brought to council because we already have a framework there to plug things into and discuss.
I know that we have kind of a a goal of when we want the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, you know, in in place by. And I wonder if that was a little ambitious, right? Because of the timing and because I I think there could be a framework, absolutely. But but then that would be who's at the table creating that framework. And so we certainly want people from the, from one thing that I will say is that it is very important that we have people at the table that have, that are black lives at the table. And so if we're going to talk about the charge, then whether that's within council, we look at, you know, three of us being a part of that process. And then we have people from the community being a part of that process. I don't know what people's thoughts are, but I I do believe that we, if we're going to be talking about an initial charge, then we need to have people that have experience as a black person, a black, a person of color, be a part of that conversation. And I know that we want to get, you know, we want to move quickly, you know, to to set up the commission and the, you know, we want to move quickly. So I don't know if people have ideas. My my initial thought was to, but we can't set up a commission without having an initial charge. We potentially could change the charge if, maybe if Eleanor could weigh in on that. If we, if we set up an kind of a template of the charge, could the charge change or evolve itself? Or is there a way to make language?
Mayor, this is Eleanor. Of course, it can change. Sometimes it's good for people to have something to respond to or to shoot at. And then, and then you, as as you get that public input about how you've worded things or what else should be included or what isn't included and should be included, of course, that can all be added. But sometimes it's it's good to have something to start with.
Okay.
Well, and I'm wondering, to your points, Bruce, and and the fact, and I don't know if this individual would be available or amenable to being a resource. And I would have to go back to to somebody else to get the name, that there is somebody at the university that has significant experience with truth and reconciliation commissions. If we could contact that person, see if there is any interest or availability, we could certainly reach out to I F R and see what they have put together so far. You know, and if there's other council members that want to do some research on these, that maybe we could, you know, in a relatively short period of time, get a charge put together for the commission with the idea, you know, as Eleanor has said, that maybe that gets us to the point of being able to appoint the commission. And if they feel that that charge needs some adjusting, I don't know if they can do that on their own or if they would have to refer that back to us and request us to make the update. Eleanor could obviously advise us on that, but that might be able to help us get moving forward on this.
What I was suggesting really is more what 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 staff does for you all the time, which is to draft something, put it in your packet so the the public has notice of that, what's being proposed and notice that you're going to be talking about it. And then even before it is finalized, you get some input and you make some changes. That's a pretty typical process.
At least from my perspective, I I don't totally have an issue with that. I think that what's going to happen is, you know, staff is going to reach out and they're going to, you know, they're going to, they're going to do some real deep research and find out, you know, what are the truth and reconciliation items that are already out there? And as long as there's an opportunity for the public to weigh in, I think a framework is exactly kind of where where we start and then the public weighs in, whether they scratch everything that's there or add on to it. But I think that that could be a way forward because we kind of want to put this in a progression rather quickly. And at least for me, I think the next, you know, potentially, this is a holiday week, right? So we will be looking at either three weeks from now, if I'm adding it up correctly, or maybe having another meeting, another special work session.
I guess when I mentioned that I F R is working, you know, Susan means you mentioned somebody from the Human Rights Commission. His name is, I guess, Aaron Pig.
No, that's not my record. That's not what I mentioned.
Which one are you talking about?
I don't know. I was just told that there's somebody at the university that has significant experience in truth and reconciliation commissions. I know it's a woman.
That's the one. His name is Aaron Pig. He is with the University of Iowa, yeah, Center of Human Rights. And he's working with I F R. And right now they even have, and they reach out to a lot of organizations. They still keep reaching to another project to have foot from another organization. And they have like kind of, you know, presentation almost ready. If we want them next time to come and have their presentation. I really suggest that we can, yes, put them agenda for the future meeting to give a report about the work that they have done so far. And if any also like public, another community want to come because, but I'm sure hundred percent those people are working hard to reach out to most of the other organization that. to reach out to most of the other organization that, uh, they, they focus on black life matter or just social organization, uh, or racial, you know, justice organization. So I, I, I think, uh, they, they, they are working hard, reaching out to the community, and they are the one who bring us all those demand. So if we can give them a chance to come and give us a report each time about what they being doing and as the end of the day is up to us to agree or disagree. Uh, but just give them the chance, uh, so they can come because they are really working hard with a lot of labor organizations and, you know, other, the racial organization, justice organization.
Okay, I would like to, for us to focus in on, on the what's happening kind of in between meetings. Because Mayor Protem, I'm hearing you say that, you know, lots of work is happening, but if, if what will be coming to city council is something for us to, I'm not, I, I, I think we need something different than just kind of a presentation with an up or down vote. Like, I think we should be involved and I think they're asking us to be involved in, in, like, their, their, like, the request for the liaison and working groups. Like, I, I think the intent is so that there's people on council who understand the work that's happening because we're all also having, getting tons of input, you know, meeting with people, getting, you know, people who are reaching out, hearing all kinds of things. And I, I think if we, whether it's one group or more than one group, if we just kind of wait for a presentation to council and then we've got, you know, maybe a, a five or six different presentations that we're supposed to be, um, you know, kind of up or down voting. I, I feel like that's going to be really inefficient. But if we have, if, if the full council is, is comfortable sort of saying who can assist to be that liaison and, and hopefully work with them, um, one, one thing I feel like we're really, that's really truly a challenge in this process is, is what the role of city council is and what it can be. And, and I'm just really concerned that, that we're going to come up with or be faced with something that maybe is beyond the scope of, of what could even be possible in our current form of government. So I think we need to be involved in that process to make sure that solutions are being developed that, that are achievable, even if they're, you know, things we haven't thought about before. So I, I really just think we, you know, we need to be trying to be engaged now, not just waiting for folks to come forward with, uh, presentations.
No, I'm saying beside that, Laura, you, we, you, being like a lesbian to the, to the, with them, that's, that's, that's totally fine. I agree with their demand and I'm with you in the same bag, but I'm saying like beside that, you know, after you meet with them, they have many things they can come and talk about it. But, you know, of course, one of us will be there, which is, that's what their demand is. They need, uh, like each council to be like representative on all those, you know, committees as a, you know, I, I, I'm agree with that. I don't mind that. But they are working hard and we need to know what they are doing.
I, I guess I would just also add to what Laura said is that I think we also have to remember that we were elected as city council members for everybody in this community, not just the Iowa Freedom Riders. And while I understand, I appreciate the, the energy and the passion that they have put into this. And we wouldn't even begin to be where we are today with these discussions without what they have done. So I don't, I don't want to minimize that. That has just been incredibly important and I'm totally supportive of that, that has gotten us to this point today. At the same time, as Laura said, we are talking to lots of people across the community. Lots of people are reaching out to us. We also have a lot of expertise with staff who can do research on what, uh, truth and reconciliation commissions have been um, and have done in South Africa and other places. And to, I'm not comfortable sitting here and saying this one group has been out meeting with all these other people in the community and doing all this hard work and then they're going to take, structure all that and bring that straight to us. We need to be getting that direct input, um, as well. And it needs, it needs to be coming from across the community. So I, I'm a, I'm a little uncomfortable with this, with this as well.
I think, um, so that we can kind of move forward with what we're, what we're hoping to do today. Um, so right now we have four different groups. So, how do we envision these, these groups? Um, and, and, and having people involved. So that is kind of where I want to transition us to now.
So I'm, I admit to being a little confused right now. Um,
So we have.
Because I, I mean, I, so, because what I'm hearing from a variety of folks is we want, we want, um, to be, to be liaising, discussing with IFR and other folks. At the same time, we do, if we want to move forward, if we're going to move forward with a, a commission, a city commission, we need to create a charge. Um, and so I guess I come down right now in favor of creating a draft charge and at the same time, taking all that input and liaising and listening so that we have that draft charge sitting there that can then be filled in or, or, uh, amended, changed, completely changed so that, that we're not pushed back another two weeks or another month.
Any other thoughts on that? And, and I think because of time, I'm, I, I would say that we should direct staff to kind of give that draft while realizing that, you know, they're going to do some good soul searching and re, you know, researching. But again, the community can weigh in, um, and we, as council, we can rethink, uh, what we hear.
Well, what draft you're talking about?
Oh, uh, the charge for the truth and reconciliation commission.
Why the staff should do it by themselves without input from the community, without input from IFR, without input from us?
Uh, if, if any of us, I mean, we, we also have the option of waiting until, I think it's going to be three weeks out at this point, unless we have another special council meeting, which we can. When I look at number two and, um, of the, of the resolution, supportive, support of the to be determined efforts of a truth and reconciliation commission and hold a council work session on it before, uh, August first to address specific alloc- allocation. So, if, uh, we, we still have time, but are, are we going to be that only one opportunity in three weeks to have that up, you know, to have that input? Now, we can talk about between now and then. We have our meeting next Tuesday that people can be a part of and, and give input. And then even after next Tuesday, uh, we can have a discussion on that as well. So maybe for now, um, since we do have a little, you know, have a little time to talk about the, uh, to address the specific allocations, then maybe we do wait and just open it up to the public next Tuesday to weigh in as well as the following week or the following council meeting.
That's before the sta- the staff propose anything. That's what you mean, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I really believe that, you know, IFR, any other's organization because, you know, uh, even though I know that they are reaching to other group, but IFR and any other, another organization, if they would like to bring us something about this, you know, let them do it. And we just have to tell the people that we are ready to, uh, like, we'd like to have feedback from the community about how we can create this committee. Uh, I, I just think that should be the way before the staff put anything. After we receive something from the community and from IFR, maybe we can give it to the staff and the staff putting together. And also from the legal perspective point, like Eleanor, our city attorney, you can look at it. That's what I, I really think.
Well, e- even if we put public input prior to any drafting from staff, we, we need an infrastructure for what, how that public input comes to us. I'm not comfortable just having an open-ended, you know, public comment time uh, to, to try and do something like a charge for a new commission that'll be appointed by, by the city council. What if, what if we had a couple of council members who before the next meeting worked, tried, tried to solicit some of that community input to at least have that draft to, to work from. I mean, we've been, we've been doing a lot on the fly lately and I'm, I'm very concerned with, I mean, we, we need to get, we need to give people our work product. They need to see what we are doing. And even if it's something that gets completely revised when we're in that, that meeting, um, I really just think that, that we need to have something in advance of when we're talking about it to respond to and to try and, you know, frame our thoughts around. So what if we had a couple of counselors who, prior to the next meeting, you know, their, their job was to help come up with this rough draft that then we would get public input on.
I think that's a tough job. Go ahead, Susan.
What I was going to say, I think Counselor Burgess' idea is good from the standpoint, if, if IFR is working hard and getting a lot of this work done and we want to move as expeditiously as possible, why not have a couple of counselors, reach out to them, ask them for the work product that they have so far? Those counselors, a couple of counselors can look at it, can discuss it with them as to, if you need explanation of why it says what it has says, so you have a better understanding of it, get it to legal, get it to staff, so they have an opportunity to look at it and respond to it and use that maybe as a working draft, um, that staff has. We can still see the original from IFR. We can see what staff has come up with, um, what changes they have made to that. Whether with this being a holiday weekend and maybe people being gone late this week, I don't know if we have time to get all that done and have it in the packet for next week. I think that's very questionable. Um, but if IFR really has gotten all that work done, let's encourage them to say, look, if you want this input, then get us this stuff now so we can start reacting to it. Don't wait for some time for presentation. I, I'm like Laura, I like to see stuff ahead of time. So I have time to think about it and process. And I think our staff needs to see it ahead of time so they can think about it and process and give us the best advice possible.
I, I think that's a good point, Susan. And by ahead of time, I think it's, it's more than the morning of, more than just an hour and a half or two hours before a meeting.
I agree.
But I need a lot more time to absorb things, wrap my head around it and, and really think about things. So it's, it's got to be presented more than just the morning of or, or a few hours before a meeting.
And I think that's what Laura said when she said we've been going on the fly. We've been doing a fair amount of that lately because we're having these one-on-one discussions and trying to get stuff to other counselors and we're not getting it to each other very fast. We've got to get back into a better procedure here.
The expectation of.
I agree.
The expectation of the community, I think, after years and years of the packet going out on Thursday, is that material that the council is going to be discussing the next week will be included, to the extent it's at all possible, will be included in the packet in Thursday, on Thursday, so that there's an opportunity to, to look at it and provide a, a feedback to the council.
Yeah.
So just from, um, a, a, a timing standpoint, we're looking at our, do we have a meeting on the 21st or do we move that meeting? July 21st?
It's the 21st.
All right. So maybe we would have something um, between now and, I, I guess the next time we can, you know, discuss this formally, uh, would be the 21st. Potentially between, now, people can weigh in on next Tuesday if they want, if we want to have that on agenda item. Um, and, and then the following week or the following two weeks, we could have the draft. Or for council to vote on the charge for the commission.
You mean three week?
Through, three weeks for the charge, if I'm counting in my head correctly.
Yeah, I, I don't see how we can get to it before then, not and give public notice. Um, but certainly that gives us plenty of time, hopefully, to get input from IFR. Um, if they've already been doing a lot of work, let the community know this is something we're moving on. Um, but maybe even have it done so it's in the packet a week ahead, which would give people even more time, if possible, to look at it and respond to it.
And Mayor, you said something about voting on it, but, um, do you really mean, uh, to discuss it and tweak the language if we felt necessary?
Um, y- yes. I mean, our, our, in our resolution, we say, I guess we don't have, that we have to vote by August 1st. So yes, we can certainly, on the 21st, um, just have it for discussion.
And I understand that.
Glad, yes.
I understand the imperative of moving quickly. I, I also understand the need to really give everyone, not just council, but everyone in the community, a chance to look at and review and comment on it. So the timeline, even though it's, it, it may seem long to some, that is one that's going to end up giving us a good product that has everyone's input in this, including especially that of IFR and also other members of the community.
Okay, so then.
Let me make sure I understand. Now we're going to have two council member will meet with, uh, IFR to look at what the, the work that has been done right now and bring that input to us. And we will, and I don't know, we will look into it and that's what you meant by three, two week, in two week.
Um, I, I, I think we can go wherever. I think, um, because of the next Tuesday is really quick for any organization to create something, um, that we actually put this on the July 21st agenda so that the public can weigh in on it, that allow, um, anyone opportunity, uh, counselors meet with whomever. Um, they want to, to discuss and re-envision what the truth and reconciliation commission looked like, research it. And then we get public input first and then we come back and we have it on the agenda. At least we would have, you know, it won't, we won't be with, uh, addressing specific allocations by then. Um, but I think we'll definitely have a lot of input that we can potentially draft up something that night. Um, if that's where council wanted to, wanted to be or, I don't know.
Can I, Mayor, can I tell you what I've understood from your, from your discussion?
Yes.
That you are looking at having a couple of council members reach out to IFR, um, get their, the, find out what work they've been doing on this issue. Those two council members look at that, uh, communicate with staffs, staff prepares a draft in connection with those two council members that we then get out to in the council's packet of, which would go out on July 16th for the 21st meeting. Then at that meeting, you can take input and discussion, et cetera, on that draft as you normally would on any agenda item. You can defer that item if you want. You can make revisions to it or whatever, but you will have a draft in your packet on the 16th.
That sound good to me.
So Eleanor, from what you've said, if that draft came back acceptable to us, we would have an item on the agenda that is the resolution that we could pass that night potentially.
Yes.
Thank you. I think that allows us to move forward fairly expeditiously, assuming we can get the contact with IFR, get their input, um, then get it to staff to review and potentially edit and then get us a draft that, as Eleanor has said, we can either amend on the floor that night or defer or accept. So that would give us some options.
That depend on like more public input, yeah.
Definitely. Yes.
Yep. All right. So are we comfortable with, with that outline of how we'll move forward? And then do we want to appoint or kind of talk about which two individuals will be in contact with IFR? And also, I mean, I think that there are other people in the community that do want to weigh in on, you know, truth and reconciliation commission. I've talked to several people, um, people of color specifically that, you know, have, went into great detail about, uh, truth and reconciliation and what that means to them. And so, um, maybe some of those ideas can be funneled or, uh, to whoever we select now. Um, who would like to be a part of that, I guess?
I would.
Good, I was going to nominate you.
Well, I, I mean, I, I, especially the part about like kind of drafting something that might be up for consideration. Well, I, I mean, I, I especially the part about like kind of drafting something that might be up for consideration. If if you all, you know, could, I don't, I don't know. It it seems to work well and was effective when you sort of put your faith in my participation in that process for the prior resolution. And I'd be really interested in helping again.
I I think, you know, I. I think I need somebody else, you know, I can't say I want to be on that, but I I really want somebody else to be. Because I I'm definitely agree and you know, this is, I think this is my. I'm personally being affected by this movement and I think I'm totally in board. That's why I think if another council member want to go with Laura and just having like. Because you're gonna have more understanding about the issue, if you have, you need clarification or anything. I will, you know, save that seat for whoever.
How about Janice?
I volunteer as well.
Okay, then, but but that doesn't means the IFR cannot meet with another people of the council to talk about something. I guess, yes, as long as it's not a quorum, they can still meet. So if they want to just convince some council about something or talk about it, yeah.
Alright. I wonder if we, so thanks to Janice and Laura. I wonder if we don't kind of have the same process. Well, I wonder for A, B, and C, if we kind of. You know, lay that discussion until our next work session and continue and continue the discussion. About what that might look like, or I think that between now and then. We could have, or do we want to put that on? Maybe in August, where we will have public input on. You know, how do people see these being envisioned? And then, because those are not with definite timelines that we, you know, can't kind of reimagine. You know, the December one for the police department. We already, or December fifteenth, we already know that that preliminary plan is very aggressive. And I think, you know, if it needs to, i- i- if we have the, whoever it's going to be a part of that group. You know, come and say, you know, we need more time, then more than likely, they're going to take whatever time, a little more time to figure out. You know, whatever they need for that. So would people be amendable to us kind of doing A, B, and C in August? Just having, maybe we'll put that on a public comment or, you know, start to get some public comment. How do we get that? How do we envision getting public input on those?
I guess I would have a question, and that would be both, I guess, for you, Mayor, and staff. Do we already have a full work session agenda for next week? If we do, then I think it's totally acceptable that we need to push this out to our first meeting in August. If not, I would suggest that maybe we try and take the easiest one. From a quote process standpoint and maybe address how we would want to move forward on housing. Obviously, that's not to develop the housing plan, but to just talk about, you know, process for housing. So I guess that would be my comment there, and then I'd like to come back to what we were talking about in a minute.
And and I know people can respond, I think the challenge that we just, you know, spent maybe thirty, forty-five minutes about. Was get in the public input first and then making decisions. And so maybe we might want to consider. Maybe having. We can work with the work session items, there's, there's, to my memory, there's a few things. There's not too much there pressing, although, you know, there's a lot going on always, right? So we could potentially, instead of having a work session. Well, we could open it up to the public, I guess, if we wanted to do something like that for. A through C, or maybe there's something different that we want, a- and I just don't know. But I I think having input first from the public might be good, especially given the time that we just took right now.
If I can give you a suggestion is, you know, why don't we just say, I know that we are focusing on the truth. And reconciliation committee, but in the same, we we are focusing on that, right, the charter and everything. Yes, that's will be our focus, but in the same time, because the people who look at all those would be a different group. And if we can just say, we need everybody to send us like their recommendation, even IFR. If they want to like bring another recommendation for like, was it a recommendation for the housing or for the anything? And also group in the community, they can work in the same time, come up with something while we are working on 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 this. So like all of them to be advertiseded at the same time that we need input from the community.
I agree that trying to gather some public input from the community sooner rather than later would be excellent. I I do think we need some structure for that, you know, whether that's. You know, meetings that aren't full council meetings that that people can, that would have, you know, sort of a forum for providing. That, you know, giving that input, whether that's a survey that would go out, whether that's. I mean, I I I can see a lot of different ways in which we would gather public input. But I would like us to just try and, try and make some pathways for that or some tools for that. So that we're gathering input in like a consistent way, so that we can categorize it and use it and track it and respond to it. And make sure people remain involved and make sure we can be responsive to them. So I don't know if if Mayor Protem, if you had other thoughts on, you know, what that might might look like. Other than in a, in addition to, you know, our meetings that would have kind of the open-ended public comment.
I said that because I know that IFR is creating like subcommittee for each category that they send out. So they already are talking about this with different group, like for example, housing. They've been talking with affordable housing coalition, you're the kind of for the housing coalition, habitat and all those. Like, I mean, like they already putting like some kind of instruction there. So if the, and also they're gonna continue working with people. So if they can bring us also, because those different group are working different thing, not the same people are working on the the same thing. That's why I mean, it's still, all of them can work at the same time. And bringing us recommendation or maybe also the council member that who going to be, you know. The 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 chosen person to work on those committee can work with those people also. Maybe right now we need to choose who council will work and what. Because, you know, they can, they can continue working while we are doing one committee. The other committee in the same time are working to bring something to us. Maybe it is best, the best thing is to choose now who want to work and what, you know?
Related back to what Laura just said, would, you know, would an appropriate. Point of discussion for next, the work session next week. Be and maybe staff could help us, you know, give us some ideas of this by then. How do we set up? A good public input process, so that we can be getting input from across the community. On all of these different items. You know, as quickly as possible, but again, we've got to make sure that it's, it's really reaching all of our various community members. And giving all of them that opportunity, and so that's where, you know, the electronic thing works for some, it doesn't work for others. But really trying to to get as much public input as quickly as we can on all of these. And and quite frankly, I think for some of these, people aren't, without some more explanation, people maybe not, are not always going to understand what it is we're getting after.
One of the things I would just mention, oh, I don't know if somebody else was about to talk, but one of the things I would just mention. Is when we had the Speak Up, Speak Out events in in some of the neighborhoods where people of color. Live. People came out and they were involved and shared their stories. And so I I do think that we should at least kind of consider, when we're talking about some of these items. How can we reach? People of color as well to be included in the conversation. So we know that we have lofty goals and we want to be aggressive and fast and all of that other stuff. But we also have to, and maybe that's a part of whatever that committee that is developed. But then I think we're kind of missing out on opportunity to have some conversations with people in our community. That they really don't know about council and how we have work sessions or formal meetings. I think we're missing some of those opportunities if we, well, I think we should just think about that a a little bit as well. How do we reach? You know, a lot of people in our community that just don't know this process of how council operates. Because we're, we're, we're talking about things that, you know, firsthand knowledge of. And experiences could help guide some of the decisions that will ultimately ultimately be made here. Alright, so it sounds like we are at a point, oh, go right ahead.
Sorry, the, I I just wanted to note that with, at a minimum on housing and perhaps. On diversity, equity, inclusion, at least with respect to what the city has done over some years. We have both a fair amount of expertise on staff that's worked through a plan before on housing. And we have a number of of nonprofits in town with with enormous expertise. And I would go back to something that the city attorney said earlier was, which is often, it's really helpful to have. A draft there or something there or a framework there to, to which people can comment, they can say they really don't like something, something's not going to work. They can add things, but sometimes it's really hard to just sort of work from a blank slate. So I would be interested in, at a minimum on housing and perhaps on how, and adding B to it as well. Asking staff to put together some things that they think are where we are now. Past what opportunities they know exist and use that as a starting point to start reaching out to. To people and and social, social justice and nonprofits that already exist and have enormous expertise in those areas.
Okay.
You want to say something?
No, did you want to say something?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I I really, I understand what Janice said, but that's after we create the committee. Maybe you can ask the staff what existing, what what we have, what the opportunity in town. But to create that committee, we don't, because we're not talking about the work or what this community, committee going to do. And where, what the city have done. And even though like my understanding, the city is dumb few thing. And if we, if the the city and the staff, yeah, they done something because I don't want nobody to get me wrong. They do something here and there, but we did not solve the crisis of affordable housing on this community. We did not have a solid plan for affordable housing in this community. It is time now to ask the public what they want to see before we can come to the staff. The staff, you know, if 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 they have something there that, you know, existing and they can do it. They have done it long time ago, you know, and we've been talking about, I I've been in the city for three years now. And I've been talking about affordable housing. If the staff have something beside what they have right now and they want to do it, they should have come up with it. During these three years that I was, every single meeting, basically, we're talking about affordable housing. I I just believe that, I understand what you think, we need that point, also, we need that work, David, from the staff. But not now, after we have input from the community, how we can create the housing. After that, we can come to the staff.
I think we have to be doing those things at the same time, or else this process will take so long that 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 we can't move forward. I I mean, I I hear what you're saying and I understand what you're saying, Mayor Protem, but I think it would be, it would be. Frankly, just wasteful for us to not work with what we have to see how it needs to be improved and move forward. And I I think that's what Counselor Weiner is saying. And and while in the past, I think city council has typically, you know, looked to staff for a recommendation. That we sort of up or down and then, you know, maybe have some some tweaking. Already, this is a very different process. And I I really appreciated your suggestion that maybe people, you know, we try and get some counselors on the different topics now. To see what conversations, meetings, input can be garnered, you know, even before our our next meeting. I and I think, I think that has to work in conjunction with. With staff and with is existing nonprofits and with organizations who've been doing social justice work. You know, over a period of time as well as with the Freedom Riders. But I think it has to be everything at once, or else we're gonna, I I think we'll just end up having, you know, to kind of reinvent the wheel as we go along.
I'm, as far as like housing, I think there is a difference between. You know, looking at what we currently have in place, anything that we have. Desires for. You know, that's already in writing and that being presented to, you know, the housing ad hoc committee, whatever we have. I think what what we're talking about is not creating new things. And allowing that to be with the housing ad hoc group. And I, and I sense that we're all in agreement with not adding new things is more so. We can't have a housing group if we don't, as council, have some type of structure. And so in my mind, at least, that structure is. The, these are the topics that have been on, you know, that council has adopted. Maybe tried in the past and had some challenges with. And these are the needs in of our community if we have that type of stuff. But I do believe at some point, we have to get to a point where we give the charge. I think getting input from the community is what it sounds like we're going to do on July twenty first. And then I think we can go into more conversation now. Unless there is something else that people really want to chime in on. I think I kind of, we need to kind of bring this. Next steps, so we know what we're going to be doing on July twenty first, Truth and Reconciliation Commission, we already talked about that. And we have Laura and Janice that's going to be meeting with IFR and and anyone else from the community. Can be plugged into them as well, or personal counselors and share your stories or what you learned. As far as the A through C, we can, we certainly can continue this conversation next. Next Tuesday, but I, I think that if we put it on July twenty first. And have them all together as suggested by Mayor Protem, where people can weigh in on it. I think it allows people time, it allows us a little time to think about things, to meet with people. And then we bring it up again on the twenty first. So. It sound like people are a little amendable to kind of getting input from the public on these items. But I also heard some structuring, but you know, just to get people ideas. Without having kind of some framework. Maybe it may be something that we've never imagined before, and we might be surprised at how people may be able to present some things to us. That we, you know, haven't thought about. But are people a- a- agreeable to July twenty first, we'll talk about all of this at that time? And then there will be only one draft, and that will be from the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. That charge that we can still have public input that night, but we'll kind of have a draft. Of Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Are people amendable to that? Is that what I'm, is that what I understood, that there'll be work between then for that?
I agree.
Yeah, I would also like to see at that, at that meeting, kind of the the framework for the progress that staff has made on the items that we identified. That they're all be working on too.
I think Jeff indicated that would even already be up on the website, start next Monday before our meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah, and maybe we can, just my thought, we can certainly have that next Tuesday. Because maybe that's what we have next Tuesday, just to get that update. Cause I I I believe on the twenty first, that's going to be, you know, a lot of. Because I, I believe on the 21st, that's going to be, you know, a lot of, a lot of time. That'd be dedicated.
Can I make one more suggestion? And that is that you really are going to have to dedicate some time to figuring out how you're going to structure the public input process. It's one thing to say you're going to get public input, it's another thing to actually get it in effective ways. And I'll use the example of the Charter Review Commission that reviewed the charter for a period of years. They spent a significant amount of time just talking about how they were going to get the public input that they needed. So I think if, if, if that's something that is important to you, it's worth some time spent figuring out how you're going to do that.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. So maybe what we could do is maybe between now and next Tuesday, just kind of have that on the agenda to think about how we can get public input, as well as have kind of the staff report on items, staff report on Black Lives Matter, on the resolution, I guess. So that would be two things that we'll add to the work session for next week. So are we all in agreement with the 21st? I'm seeing some not enough heads. All right, so we're, so we will kind of bring now to a close unless there are some lasting comments from anyone? Well, thanks, councilors. I know that we haven't given a great deal of time to Black, to this resolution, Black Lives Matter. Wanted to, we're learning along the way, what is really systemic racism? We're learning along the way, kind of the processes that council has always had and how do we move forward with ensuring that black voices are heard? And I know that that's kind of, sometimes can be a little challenge with our bureaucracy. And I think that we have to continue to kind of strive to reimagine how this process work. So thanks for all you've done today and we will convene again on Tuesday at 5:00 PM in our work session. So there's nothing else for today, speak now. All right, we will come back on next Tuesday. Have a happy Fourth, everybody.